Can, please, can you stand, everyone, please stand? We lost two, actually, two leaders in our town last week in 2018. One would be Judy Wick, our former chairman of planning and zoning, and the other one would be Bill Butterly, who used to be a volunteer, but he was also our chairman of town council and our state representative for many years in Watertown in Oakville. So if we can borrow heads to the moment of silence for those two. Thank you. Okay, roll call.
Thomas Wick.
Yeah.
Mary Ann Rosa. David Demiers. Anthony Devona.
Here.
Case Duplessis.
Here.
Kathleen Ramos.
Here.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Louis Raza.
Paul Wilmelby.
Here. Public participation, Mr. O'Sullivan, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dennis O'Sullivan, and I live at 238 North Street. I've been a resident of Watertown for more than forty-five years. I know that we're in the process of moving our town offices into a new facility, which is the Hemingway Park School. But my question is, and I've asked this question of you before, and I really have never gotten a satisfactory answer, so can you tell me what is the plan and how much is it going to cost to take the existing buildings, and I think there are three, now maybe you could correct me, one is the Old Town Hall, one is the current building that's next to the library, which is used primarily for the land use folks and for the Mr. Scannell's office, and then there's the Board of Education facilities that were in the Trumble House. Can you tell me what your plan is, if you have one, for those, and if you don't have one, what do you plan on doing?
Well, our facility subcommittee is responsible for our buildings, and Case has, do you have anything on that at all?
Well, we had a meeting way back in the last part of last January. We found out that with the Munson House, you can double its size, you can even tear it down, but you can't, you have to have the land for educational purposes. All right? So that much we know. We haven't decided what we can do with that, or if anything. The Old Town Hall, it's part of the historical area, and I don't remember the lady's name that's chairman, but she and a couple of other people were going to look into getting grants for redoing the town hall. And there was also one gentleman that wanted to buy the town hall and make it into a bed and breakfast, but I don't know where that stood. And as far as, what's the other one?
The annex.
The annex. We were, everyone's talking about selling that. So that, there's no, there's no plan. We're just talking about it right now.
But, wait a minute.
Yes, sure.
You're supposed to be our representatives that have the responsibility to carry through on a new town hall, and part of that responsibility is, in my opinion, is to tell us clearly what is going to happen to the existing buildings and how much it's going to cost. And from what I hear from you, you've done nothing on that, other than some superficial determinations. You have not, on the Old Town Hall...
Right. No, we haven't, because we, at the time of the meetings, we hadn't broken ground yet.
When, but, one thing has nothing to do with the other.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't, but it's not just one person that is involved in this. There's several people that have to come together and decide what to do and what is the best for the town.
But, wait a minute. You're saying that you don't have to. That's nonsense.
What's nonsense? Not nonsense.
What's nonsense is, you have taken those buildings and emptied them. You're going to have an empty building. You're going to have a building that needs heat. You're going to have a building that, what are you going to do with it? You haven't done anything to make that determination.
I've got a year to figure it out, Dennis.
I'm not pointing at you, please.
I know.
Don't take it personal.
I know. But I've got a year.
Whatever committee you've got hasn't done anything to that particular building, and that's a big, big building. And if you're going to tell, if you're going to sell the town hall annex...
Yes.
I don't see any for sale sign out in front.
Well...
And if you're going to do something up at the Tuttle House, what are you going to do?
Munson House.
Why aren't you, why don't you have an active group now, and maybe a citizens group...
We do have a citizens group.
...that is looking into what to do with those things?
That's part of my facility group, is a facility group.
And that's what I'm, that's what I'm standing up here, trying to ask you to do, and I've asked this six months ago, and you haven't done squat in the six month, yes?
Mr. Sullivan? Miss Sullivan?
I'm sorry if you feel that way.
We all have different timetables, we all have different urgencies. We have eight to ten more months left in using those buildings.
At least.
Before we even move into the new town hall. You may think it's prudent to start a year, year and a half, and our committees, we may think it's prudent to start maybe six months before. There's no, there's no special time date. It will get done, we will look at it, and I'm sorry if you don't think that we started soon enough, but there's people on this side that think we have some more time left.
All right. I was here plus or minus six months ago, and I'd like not to be able to come back here in another six months and hear the same, and let me use the term, the same fluff.
I promise you by the summer, we'll have a plan.
We'll have less than fluff.
What date? Give me a date.
August.
No.
August what?
Thirty-second. I mean, you know, August, it's, I...
August thirty-second?
Come on, Mr. Sullivan.
Wait a minute.
I know, there is no August thirty-second.
You're in charge! Come on! You're the guy in charge! So, August thirty-second?
No, you're not, I think I've been very...
Is there an August thirty-second?
I think I've been very, very equal to you, or very appropriate to, to say, "August." So I think I've been, I've been pretty good to give you an answer of "August." You know, politicians usually give those kind of names.
Let's shoot for the middle. How about that?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
August fifteenth.
We'll see you then.
See you then. Goodbye.
Bye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Rosa Baleski, 456 Davis Street, Oakville. I just would like to ask, when you get to agenda item E and F, I hope you're going to give us some detail behind it, under nine, new business. Just, sometimes when you bring up things on the council, you kind of just go through it really quickly. You might propose a motion, and it's passed, and a lot of times, there's no discussion. So I'm just looking for a good discussion on those, to understand what the process is that you're talking about.
Okay. Hope I don't disappoint you, because we, you know, we have our, as we do with, I will go slower.
Well...
And we'll see what happens.
Just clearer.
Okay, thank you.
Not so much slower, just clear information.
Okay.
That's all I ask, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Almichael, 95 Woodvine Avenue. Tom, thank you for putting the ordinance, I'm sorry, the chairman's report under correspondence. Thank you for putting that note there. Now I know what's going on with the correspondence. I've come here several times asking for the transfer of funds to be in the minutes of the meetings. I haven't seen them yet. Transfer of funds are probably very important. They're available in your package, and I'd just like to be able to review them in the minutes. Can that be done?
Aren't they?
Yeah, they're in here.
No, this is the transfer of funds, not the tax...
Resolutions?
No, transfer of funds. Line item on your agenda, it's G, consider authorizing the transfer of funds between line items. I have not seen that yet. If it can be there, I'd certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none? Public participation? Over? Hi, Bill. Okay. Can I have a motion for a minutes of December 17, 2018?
Yeah, um, Tom. Tom.
Oh, sorry, Bill.
Oh.
Hello.
Come on, are you sleeping over there, Bill? Come on. Okay.
Bill Danson, 105 Dunrobin Lane. First of all, on behalf of myself, as the chairman of Park and Rec, commissioners, Lisa Carew, staff, and all the employees, we want to wish everyone on the town council and Watertown town government a happy, safe, and prosperous new year. Secondly, I see on new business E, there's a question about dropping the waiver on a job that we're trying to fill.
Yeah.
I've looked at this over the past six months, and looking at, again, other towns, other things, I think our structure of government needs to be changed. Frank Nardella was a phenomenal superperson that covered the finance and assistant town manager when needed in a period of time years ago was appropriate. I think now, to help the current town manager, we should have a specific assistant town manager. Finance director is separate, and maybe covering two areas that we sort of overlook, because they seem to get done, one of those being a grant writer. Every department head tries to write their own grants. A lot of that stuff is all duplicate, but it's not duplicate when the director of Park and Recs is doing it, when the director of Public Works is doing it, when the police chief is doing it, when the fire department chief is doing it, when the town manager is doing it, okay? It's not, we're replicating, we're wasting a lot of time. A lot of that stuff, again, a grant writer should be aligned with the finance department, and we have no human resource director in the town of Watertown. Lot of things, again, questions that are asked, the Public Works Union is different than the union that works at Crestbrook, it's different than the Board of Education Union. So we're all in different directions. A human resource director slash assistant town manager could fulfill both of those needs and get us back in line with what's currently out there in the other towns, cities, and get Watertown a little bit better, quicker, and in the long run, saving us a lot of money. Because there are a lot of grants, and I was shocked, being involved with three grants last year for the doggy park, that one grant was eighty-seven pages. That's time-consuming for one person running a department. So my thing is to possibly look at maybe realigning what our structure of government is up a little higher, assistant town manager slash human resource director and finance director slash grant writer. Thank you.
Okay. Well, Bill, we are looking into a grant writer. The other one, I don't think I can make you happy on that one, but a grant writer we are definitely looking into. Okay? Okay. Anybody else? Hearing, okay, hearing none will close public participation again.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the regular meeting minutes of December 17, 2018.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stain. Motion passes. Chairman, okay, I have a letter of resignation from Christina Hassenger, I believe. She is on, or was on, the Economic Development Commission. It was given, she gave it to Denise Russ, and she must resign.
I know, thanks.
And we will replace her in regular business. Also, the town received a complaint through Superior Court from Waterbury, wanting us to pay their water bill, which we have a disagreement with. So we will be dealing with that in the near future. Town manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding the new town hall, I provided you with an update from Burlington Construction, in which there's a delay of approximately two weeks. January 28th is the new date for the move to the temporary space for all the departments that are currently there. They've had trouble procuring some items that are necessary for that move. Also, we received the $36,000 reimbursement from the state for the body cameras for the PD. That was recently received, and it's in our account. Also, I'm continuing with my first round of budget reviews, halfway through this week. Next week, I have more, and then we go into the second round. That's it for tonight.
Okay, thanks. Subcommittee, you have anything for Public Works?
Yeah, we had a meeting about some of the things that we'll be discussing, and as far as...
Motion.
Transfer station prices and that kind of thing. We will not be having a regular meeting this month for Public Works. It'll be in February, the second Monday in February. That's it.
That it? Okay. All right. Let's move on to new business, please. A, Henry?
A, okay.
That would be Board of Commissions.
I move to appoint Erica Lafferty Garbattini, 33 Hart Street, Watertown, Connecticut, as an alternate member of the Economic Development Commission to fill the unexpired term of Christina Hassenger for a term to expire January 31, 2021.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Fall? No? All in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stain. Motion passes. Okay.
B, I have no idea what you want.
No, B. B is a request by the Board of Education for a capital improvement fund. Obviously, we're going to hear from the superintendent, maybe some board members tonight, which I will ask you to come up and explain to us. We're not going to vote on this tonight, it's just for listening, and we will take it up in the next meeting.
Thank you.
Superintendent?
Good evening, town council. I'm Rydell Harrison, the proud superintendent of Watertown Public Schools, and I want to start by saying thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. Thank you for the support that you give to our students and to our schools, and again, thank you to our Board of Education members for being here tonight, to hear tonight's presentation. Tonight, I'm joined by our business manager, Tom Distazio, who will be available for any questions that you might have at the end of the presentation, but if there's anything, any questions that you have along the way, feel free to stop me, and I will work to be very brief. Since coming to Watertown almost nine months ago, I've been closely working with the Board of Education, our staff, and our community, to develop a long-term plan for our schools. And in addition to the many hours that we've spent thinking about instruction and curriculum, we've also spent a lot of time thinking about, talking about budget and finance, and making sure that we are good stewards of taxpayer dollars. Shortly after I started, I spoke with our board chair, Ms. Crotty, about establishing a capital improvement fund, and the need for establishing a clear plan for funding the maintenance needs that we have with our facilities. She shared that this was also a priority of the Board of Education, and that our vice chair, Mr. Lambert, who is also the chair of both the Budget and Finance and the Facilities, PBC, and Operations Committees, that he has also been a huge proponent of establishing a capital improvement fund. In fact, he's so much of a supporter of this that he asked me about this during the interview process, and asked what my long-term plan was for capital improvements, even though I was living in North Carolina at the time, and had not even visited all of our schools. I'm not sure what my answer was, but apparently was good enough to get me here tonight. So currently, we have a capital improvement plan that identifies improvement projects that need to be addressed within the next year, within the next five years, and then also within the next 20 years. For example, we're really, really proud of the quality of our athletic facilities, particularly those here at the high school, but we also know that we'll need to resurface the track within the next few years. That anticipated cost, for instance, is about $350,000. And as our schools continue to age, we have, we have to have a well-defined plan for maintaining our playscapes at our elementary schools and addressing concerns related to our aging roofs at each of our buildings. And although our capital improvement plan that we've laid out over the next five, two to five to 20 years, it identifies the why, the what, and the when. It's missing the most critical piece, and that is the how. So without a clear plan for funding improvements, many of the capital projects continue to be pushed from year to year. One example that you are probably familiar with is, in 2015-16, we identified the need to make improvements to the roof of the maintenance garage. To date, that project still hasn't been completed, although it's been a part of the proposed budget each year. And as you're driving past, you'll notice the beautiful tarp there that's literally piecing things together until we really have funds allocated for that project. Tonight, I'm here not requesting funds, but requesting the establishment of a capital improvement fund for the Board of Education. A copy of that draft proposal, which was developed in part by attorney Paul Jessel, it was reviewed by our board's attorney and approved by the Board of Ed. That proposal was shared with you prior to tonight's meeting. As noted in section two of that proposal, the sole purpose of this fund would be to set aside funds for the repair, replacement, and/or improvement of the buildings, facilities, and fixtures under the Board of Education. Section two also notes that the funds in the Board of Education Capital Improvement Fund may not, under any circumstances, be reallocated to any other purpose not specifically designated herein. So essentially, what that means is, these are funds that we would identify from our own budget, and we want the opportunity to put those in a fund and be able to plan out for long-term projects related to capital improvements. Our goal would not be to put that money in a fund and then use it for something else, and we're also not asking for an additional allocation related to that fund. The language regarding the control of the fund and the process for utilizing the funds is really explicit in the proposal. Sections four and five of the proposal identify the town as the fiscal authority of the fund, and requires the Board of Ed to submit recommendations for expenditures to the town council. According to the proposal, all recommendations shall be accompanied by a detailed description of the work to be performed, and shall be supported by written bids or estimates and purchase orders as required under the provisions of the town charter. Section three, and this is probably the biggest piece of the proposal, identifies five sources of funds to be allocated to the capital improvement fund. Each year, if this plan moves forward, the Board of Ed will allocate between .5 and 1% of the annual budget to the fund. For example, if the plan, if the fund had been established prior to this current fiscal year, the board would have set aside about $218,000, or 5% of our total budget of $43.7 million. This would have allowed us, of course, to address the roof repair that I mentioned previously, where we have the tarp, and also address other smaller projects, while also allowing us to apply a portion of those funds towards many of the bigger ticket items in the future. Other possible sources of income include revenue generated by fundraising or charitable gifts. As you would expect, these would have to be designated specifically for the capital improvement fund. And another source of potential revenue for that fund would be any money that is not expended by the Board of Education from its annual budget as a result of savings throughout the year. As you all know, our annual budgets have been very lean over the last several years, and although it's important to have this option as a part of this proposal going forward, I really don't anticipate annual savings to be a significant source of revenue for this fund. Since coming on board, Mr. Distazio and I have been working very closely each month, almost on a weekly basis at times, to look at our expenditures and look at what our proposed, what our budgeted amount is for each of our line items. This allows us to really track our spending and to really be in a position where we could make any mid-course corrections as the fiscal year is going on, rather than waiting to the end of the year where we have a lot of variance. We also want to make sure that the way that we are using taxpayer resources or taxpayer dollars is to impact the students who are currently sitting in our schools, rather than waiting to the end of the school year and trying to scramble to do something. And so that, even though that's a part of this proposal, it is not the most significant part. The last source of funds listed in our proposal is revenue generated from facility rental fees. This past September, the Board of Education voted to amend our facilities use policy, and we adopted a new rental fee schedule that went into effect this past January 1 of 2019. This new fee structure requires outside groups to pay rental fees for using our fields, and our plan from the beginning was to use this new revenue to maintain and to update our facilities. At the start of my presentation, I mentioned the need for long-term planning. Currently, I'm working with our team on developing a strategic plan that will guide the district's work over the next three to five years. As we dream about what we want our instructional and academic programs to look like, at the conclusion of this plan, I am very mindful of the budget challenges that we face here in Watertown and also in communities all across our state. And as difficult as it will be for us to identify and earmark money, .5% at a minimum, as difficult as it is for us to set aside that money in our annual budget, it's really our only option to ensure that we are prepared for future capital improvements as we go forward. As you know, the cost of proactive maintenance of facilities pales in comparison to the cost of emergency fixes that disrupt student learning, and place additional strains on an already tight budget. For example, it can cost $15,000 to $20,000 to replace a section of the boiler when it fails, and of course, a better approach to this would be to be able to put money away and use those capital improvement funds to proactively address some of our potential concerns. We can monitor those potential concerns based on the maintenance history of the HVAC systems, based on the age of the HVAC systems, and be able to determine, is it more cost-effective to replace a unit versus putting fixes together? So our request for this evening is that the council move the proposal to establish Board of Education Capital Improvement Fund to the Ordinance Subcommittee for Review. Similar to the town's fire truck replacement fund, this fund will allow us to responsibly plan for long-term improvements and ensure our facilities continue to meet the needs of our students and the needs of our community. So at this time, I welcome any questions that you might have, and I'm going to call my sidekick up to be able to answer any that I can.
Anyone?
I have a question. What, you know, just a general question about why you need, why you're looking to the town council to restrict these funds for you?
It's a great question. So when we were establishing this fund, we wanted to start with recommendations from Mr. Jessel, until he really sketched out the proposal for us. We know that the town is our, is the fiscal authority for the Board of Education, so it makes sense that we would come with this request. And then it also really helps to foster continued partnership between the Board of Ed and the town. We think that those are really important connections to establish and maintain, because we see how much our facilities not just impact our students and the board, but really play a significant role in our community.
Mr. Chairman, what are some of the kind of larger capital improvements that you see being completed over the next, let's say, two to three years if this plan was going to play?
Sure. So some of the most urgent ones, and Tom, feel free to jump in, some of the most urgent ones that we've discussed are, like I mentioned, the track replacement, or the track resurfacing. We also know that from a facility standpoint, our turf fields require a lot of annual maintenance, and we're getting to the point where we're going to have to really invest some additional time and money. These are things that we'll have to do anyway, and of course, when we look at our schools, even though our bill, our facilities feel very new, John Trumble is... Trumbull is pushing 18, 19-years-old, and so we know that, that we're coming towards the end of the lifespan of, of some of our roofs, uh, in older sections even of our, uh, remodeled buildings. So those are some of the, the, uh, very large ticket items that we have, uh, coming down the pipe in the next several years. Um, we believe that this plan, our plan, uh, with, for, for this fund is that we could delay having to, uh, come for, with, uh, additional appropriation requests, um, but we'd be able to plan out, plan for that. Uh, we also, uh, believe that this would allow us to delay having to, um, uh, request any bonding for some of the larger ticket items. Uh, and so, these are maintenance things that, we're not talking about luxuries, uh, but we're talking about things that will have to be done, and so we can either wait for it to fail, or we could think about how we plan ahead.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I don't have any questions, a couple of comments, though. Uh, I've been, I've been around a long time, you know, around the Civil War, so, I, when they established the fund for the fire trucks, worked for years, it, this way it didn't impact the budget. Uh, same thing, Public Works had a plan for a long time with Roy, uh, Phil Delapo, on a timely way to replace vehicles and yet keep, keep it level now. The thing, one thing concerned me, when they put the fields and the artificial fields, uh, the councils had some long discussions with the people that did the job, and, uh, they said at the time that probably every 10 years, there's gonna have to be some work done, and we asked them like, how much? And they said, well, you know, for the, for the track and the fields, probably a million dollars every 10 years. And I'm saying, oh, boy, we better start putting money aside every year at that time, so when the time comes, you don't have to bond it, we don't have to go, you know, and hopefully it won't impact the budget that much. So, the bottom line is, I, I think this is an excellent idea, I think it should have been done a long time ago.
Thank you. The, the analogy that I use for that is, um, I, 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 I'm very, very proud of our facilities. In fact, um, at least once, twice a week, I'm calling some of my friends in North Carolina bragging about what we'd have that they don't. Um, however, in some case, it's almost like we bought a Porsche but didn't have a plan for oil changes, right? And so, um, so this gives us an opportunity to really be responsible. Um, I think that it's, um, it's important for the community to see us as, um, uh, fiscal managers for, for the, for the district, for the board, um, to be making, uh, smart long-term decisions that, to your point, just seem to make sense.
To the Chair. Um, in Section Three here about the sources of funds, the Part A where it talks about a minimum of half a percent of the budget, your own budget will go and be deposited in here. Um, am I reading it correctly that, um, well, actually, I'll use our scenario of the last couple of years. Health insurance costs were through the roof for the town's side, the Board of Ed's side, we had to appropriate millions of dollars to cover those costs. Is it correct, my understanding, that even if we had to, um, take money out of the general fund for health insurance or whatever the cost might be, that would still be above and beyond what would be deposited into this account? Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the game plan would be to set aside at least a minimum of one-half percent to put into this fund. Uh, as a long-term plan, it makes sense to stay on top of it that way, uh, in, in the instance where an additional appropriation was necessary for some other purpose, whether it's health insurance or, or some kind of, um, other maintenance issue or, or something that might come up throughout the year, we would have to find a way to, uh, to manage that through the course of our normal, um, processes. As Dr. Harrison mentioned, we meet on a regular basis to make sure that we're managing, um, how our expenditures are and what variances we have in the budget so that we can make mid-course corrections. The idea would be that this .5% minimum would still be retained in, in the instance that we had to make such a correction.
Thank you.
So, a question, uh, where do we get the .5% and the 1%? Is that, is that like a calculation that you made, where you determine that, or?
Uh, it, it's not so much a calculation. In reviewing our long-term capital project plan, uh, as Dr. Harrison mentioned, we have a plan going from, you know, we could look at one year, we could look out five years, and we could look out 20 years. Uh, Mr. San, Sennicola, our facilities manager, has been instrumental in putting that together. Uh, when you look at some of the costs associated with that plan, this was, uh, a dollar amount that we felt would be adequate, that over the long term would, uh, would be adequate to fund, uh, such projects as, as those that are, uh, mapped out in, in the long-term plan.
What we anticipate happening is that, uh, at the start of, of having these funds available, we will likely have to go back and pick up some of those projects that we would have, um, that, that have been cut from previous, um, budgets. And so a way for us to do, to play a little bit of catch-up, but in the long term, um, really having the opportunity to, um, that, that amount of .5% up to 1% is really, um, in line with what we see some of those, um, annual needs being and, and still providing some, um, carryover for some of the bigger projects.
Yes. Um, can I think?
Yeah, I just, um, I think it's a great thing to, to, to do because you are right, the, the schools are getting older, the roofs need to be replaced, I understand all that. Uh, my question is, is, when, when would you determine, would, you have medical costs, you've got all these other things going on, when do you determine where, uh, if you take .5% or 1%? Or, it didn't say that in here, did it? As to when you were going to determine how much you were going to take per annual?
It would be part of the, the yearly, um, budget development process.
Okay.
And so the .5% as a minimum, um, you know, that, that kind of locks us in that we would have to identify that much in our budget. When we talked about having the flexibility of up to 1%, um, I think about that day somewhere in, in, in the future where, you know, we get a call from the state and they say, you know, hey, we have all this additional money for you, um, here you go.
Good luck.
So, I'm crossing my fingers that that day happens. What we anticipate is that we will likely, for the next several years, be closer to that .5%.
Okay, thank you.
Unfortunately, that's usually the opposite for the city. Okay. Now, this is, uh, this, this will be not used for the general fund, like, like the state puts the lockbox in food and they, they, they build a trapdoor and it just falls down to the floor and they spend it anyway.
Correct.
So this is, this is not gonna be used for the general fund.
That's correct. We, and we wanted to be really explicit about, um, what we're not asking for is the opportunity to have a drawer full of cash that we could dip in. We wanted to be really, really clear that these monies are set aside for, for facilities.
Do you have a timeline? Uh, I know you're doing the budget now, do you need to know, how quickly do you need to know this? Cause I, um, that's why we're not gonna vote for it tonight, uh, tonight, cause we need some time.
Sure.
But when is your, do you have a time for us?
So, um, we start with our, but we're, we're in the budget development process.
Right, yes.
So right now, as we've been, um, kinda taking those first steps, we're, we're, we're planning for a favorable outcome.
Okay.
So we're, we're setting aside that money and then
Okay.
Working to identify places where, where we have to
Okay. So I will, you know, try to get that to you then next week and
I appreciate it.
Get all that information. I have to talk to, uh, Town Manager and, and, uh, Attorney, um, Jessel.
Thank you.
We'll go from there. Okay. Any other questions? Having none?
Just clarification.
Oh.
Dr. Rydel, uh, Harrison, can you explain that this is not an additional funding?
Correct.
And it's not gonna affect the MBR?
Correct. Do you wanna talk about MBR a little bit?
Um, yes, uh, I, I think as Dr. Harrison stated, this would be part of our, our general fund budget, uh, as, as part of our budget process anyway, we would evaluate, um, capital projects, and, uh, and this would be part of that. This would not be in addition to, uh, what we would have utilized
What are you gonna be asking for?
Yeah.
The minimum budget requirement. It's gonna be, it'll be all the same.
Correct.
It'd be part of that, mi, uh, minimum budget requirement, MBR. Okay. That's right. Anybody else? Seeing none? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Who did?
Okay, hang on.
Okay.
See?
See.
Okay, see.
Okay, ordinance change.
Hmm. I move to adopt the proposed amendment to Chapter Three, Section 3-10 Code of Ethics of the Watertown Code of Ordinances, and such amendments should read as follows. Chapter Three, Section 3-10, A. No former public employee or public official shall appear for compensation before any municipal board or agency in which he was formerly employed or on which he formerly served at any time within a one-year, with, within a period of one year after termination of his service with the municipality. B. No public employee or public official shall apply nor be granted any employment with any municipal board or agency in which he has been employed or on which he has served at any time during the preceding 12 months unless said employee or official possesses such integral knowledge of some municipal project or operation that is necessary for the town to access. However, in such case, such employment shall be temporarily and only on an as-needed project basis.
I have a second.
Second.
Discussion. Notice? Any discussion? Paul? Uh, I've listened tonight, the comments previously at the public hearing, and I think I said this the last meeting as well, the number one or two years is strictly, in my opinion, an arbitrary number, there's no right and wrong answer. I'm still comfortable with the two years. The old adage that I always go by, my old mechanic used to say, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So, I, I think two years is reasonable. That's it? Okay. Anybody else? Having none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Nope.
Stain? Votes and passes, five, one?
Six.
Five. Paul.
D.
Okay, Public Works.
Okay, yes, okay, I re, I move to revise the project list for the 2019 Public Works Bond to include the following projects. Hang on. Bond costs $75,000. Reconstruction of Wolfson Street Bridge, $2 million. Reconstruction of Mountain View Drive, $160,000. Reconstruction of Hungerford Avenue, $164,000. Reconstruction of Bassett Road by Kings Hill, $468,560. Rehabilitation of Depot Street, $178,440. Intersection of Sperry and Lake Winnebago Road, $92,000. North Street wall repair at Culvert, $312,000. Sidewalks in Watertown and Oakville, $200,000. Hamilton Avenue, excuse me, Hamilton Avenue Transfer Station, $100,000. Annual milling and paving of projects, $750,000 for three years. That's $2,250,000 for a grand total of $6 million.
I have a second.
Second.
Discussion. Paul? Yes, couple of comments. Um, I thought about this, and, and my suggestion was at one point to see if we can get that $6 million figure down a little bit, uh, but some of the, some of the things on this, uh, big-ticket items on this list have to be done, so we're gonna have to move forward on it. Uh, you know, there's also some other things I'd like to see done, uh, so, I'll support it.
Wow.
Anybody else?
Can, can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. The reconstruction of Wolfson Street Bridge is, uh, is said to be $2 million. The State of Connecticut is going to reimburse us, don't know when, but they're gonna reimburse us $1 million. So, that brings it total down to $5 million.
Okay. Have there any questions?
I just wanna know what the revision was.
The $2 million, the money that the state was gonna front us, has to be included in the bond package because we have no idea when we're gonna be reimbursed, whether it's in this fiscal year or whether we got it anyway.
Does, anybody have any questions of our Director, Mr. Kavanaugh? I won't bring him up if you don't. Any none? All in favor, say goodbye saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stain? Vote and passes? Okay. Assistant Town Manager/Finance Director position?
Okey-dokey. I move to waiver the educational requirement for the Assistant Town Manager/Finance Director position.
Second.
Mr. Skene?
Would you like me to read my memo to the council?
If you'd like to read into the point, in ten, in ten minutes?
Explain the situation.
Sure, absolutely.
As all of you are aware, we have been searching for a candidate to fill the vacant position of Assistant Town Manager/Finance Director since January of 2018. To facilitate this search, we entered into a contract with CCM's Municipal Consulting Service to, to screen and present candidates that were qualified to fill the position. Over the course of the last 10 months or so, CCM has presented us with numerous qualified candidates, and we made offers to three separate individuals. All three of these candidates, at various stages of the process, rejected our offers. I feel that furthering the search would not be fruitful in my efforts to fill the important, this important position. Therefore, I am recommending to the Town Council that they vote to waive the educational requirement as established in the Town Council-approved job description for Assistant Town Manager/Finance Director, which was approved 7/17/06. Should the council render such a decision, it would be, it would clear the way for me to appoint a current, long-tenured employee in the Finance Department who does not meet the educational qualifications under the current council-approved criteria.
Comments, questions?
So, by waiving it, we are not, we're not amending it, right? We're just waiving it currently?
I would only recommend that it be waived on this one-time basis.
Okay. Because she has 26 years of experience, is it?
Twenty-three years.
Twenty-three years.
In the Finance Department.
Paul? Yeah. Excuse me, just a, um, comment. Um, apparently, I understand the difficulties that we're going through trying to find a qualified person to accept the job, uh, but let's face it, uh, someone's got pretty big shoes to fill.
Yes.
Um, and I think it requires a lot of expertise. I think, I think we should maintain the requirements that we have because we want the best and the brightest, hopefully. Uh, it may take a little longer than we thought, but I don't wanna compromise, uh, for the people of Watertown, I think they deserve the best, and I'd like to see us go, go for, go for the best we can get. Okay. Well, another consideration, go ahead.
Just an additional comment. I had a very long discussion with Joe DeLong, the President of CCM, and he said, this is a problem that's endemic throughout the country, not just our state. There's very few candidates that wanna enter the public sector in the finance realm.
Ah, you mentioned that. Okay. Anybody else? Having none?
I just wanna say quickly that if the person has the experience, which, um, done with the town for 23 years, definitely has the experience, and that, especially for that period of time, definitely outweighs some of the education that this person would have had 25-plus years ago.
Okay. Anything else? Having none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Nope.
Five, one? Vote and passes? Okay. Transfer station.
I move to revise the transfer station fee schedule to allow for grass clippings at no charge. Recliners will now be $10 each, and soiled or ripped mattresses or box springs will be $20 each to dispose of. Second.
Got a second?
Second.
A second.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for, uh, Mr. Kavanaugh, since he is here?
I don't know what it was before.
No, it was nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Is that the answer?
But they're having problems.
Excuse me, but Do you have any questions? Do I mean bring Roy?
Bring, bring Roy up.
Come up, all right.
Mr. Kavanaugh, Director of Public Works?
Okay.
Yeah, just question on, um, what it was previous to this, or was there a charge?
For mattresses.
For grass clippings?
Grass clippings were not accepted up at the transfer station. We've recently applied for modifications for the Connecticut DEP General Permit for Leaves to Accept Grass Clippings in response to, uh, public concerns.
Okay, and recliners were?
Recliners were leaves to accept grass clippings in response to public concerns.
Okay, and recliners were?
Recliners were being carried at the same price as sofas, but they were half the size, so we figured if we half the cost, it'd be more reasonable or appropriate cost.
Okay. And ripped mattresses, box springs were, can you answer that, or?
Currently, we're getting rid of boxes, mattresses, and box springs through the, the mattress stewardship program at no cost to the town, they're getting recycled. We discovered when we actually implemented the program, that if they came in too soiled, or they'd been left outside, or otherwise acceptable, or had lice, or whatever, they would not be accepted by the stewardship, and the town was being charged twenty dollars each. So, this is a proactive measure to essentially pass along the cost of this particular materials. We're not making money, and we're not losing money either.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Abstain? Motion passes?
I move to
Thanks, Roy.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds between line items.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? No questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Abstain? Motion passes? H.
I, I move to approve the resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Second, have a second.
Second.
Any comments? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Abstain? Motion passes? Aye.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing an appropriation in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-four cents for tax refunds.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Abstain? Public participation? Anybody have any comments? Please come up to the podium, name and address, please.
Al Mickel, 95 Woodbine Avenue. I certainly would love to read the proposal for this fund. You guys have been at the short end of the stick for a while, because you can't carry any funds forward, so having a plan to carry it forward is probably not a bad idea. Some of the practices in the past were sort of iffy at best, when we wrote purchase orders for next year's things. With that being said, the, a lot of marriages are broken up over the control of money. Now, I'd hate to see the control of money break up this marriage, so reading this thing might be interesting for, for me, I would be appreciated. Now, you mentioned you have a one-year plan, a five-year plan for capital improvements. Is that something I could read also? Is that available?
Um.
Through the chair, is that available?
No, no, that's not what I want. I mean, I just don't want the, asking questions to the audience in the, in the uh
Through the chair, can I get it from the Board of Education?
That's up to Doctor.
Sure, I'm happy to.
Okay.
We will, that will be part of our discussion when we do our annual budget presentations. Currently, that, the entirety of that plan, it's several, probably close to thirty, forty pages of Excel spreadsheets, so we don't have that available on the website, but that's something that, that we could look into, make sure that that's available, so the people know what our plan is.
I'll be there. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Anybody else?
Catherine Camer, 31 Cottage Place. Through the chair, I hope to ask a question also of the Board of Education, because I know at my church, we always had a capital improvement fund that we were able to make additional donations to, and I'm curious if people can donate to this fund if they wanted to. Can you take money that's not, you know, a capital fund drive for the Board of Ed? Will they be able to take, donate? Yeah, I'm happy to donate to it. It doesn't have to necessarily come from the budget, I don't know. Is that possible?
Yes.
Possible?
Yes, Roy, it's approved, yes.
Okay, that's great.
Absolutely.
Second, you mentioned the Superior Court case with the water, and I just wanted to tell you that people are kind of anxious since that was announced, and that it's behind almost a million dollars, and I think it would be a good idea to jump ahead of that, maybe, I, I know, obviously, this is in mediate, going to mediation or whatever, and you would have no idea, but certainly if they, if they reached an agreement and say, you know, hey, we owe three hundred thousand, and then your bill's gonna go up X amount of dollars, are the people going to then get a bill to set aside that three hundred thousand? I mean, people don't know what that's talking about, we owe a million dollars. So, I just think maybe if you can get something that explains to people what's really gonna, what it's looking like. I know you wouldn't know at this time, but people are getting a little nervous when they're seeing this lawsuit, and that we owe a million dollars, it's not settled, what are we gonna owe when the time is settled? What's our bill gonna be? So, just letting me know.
Okay, well, I will, I'll do this. I will bring, Benny? To the next meeting?
Attorney Jessel's handling the case.
Pardon me?
Attorney Jessel's handling the case, it is a legal matter.
All right, we'll get, I'll get your question in the next meeting.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Anybody else?
Can I just say something?
Go ahead.
This thing with the water department, since I've been around, it's happened twice. Waterbury's calculators are different than ours, and they always claim we owe 'em a ton more money, and we really don't. So, we went to court, we won both times, so I'm
Well, we went to arbitration, we didn't go to court, we never got to court. We went to arbitration. It went to arbitration, or
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's what he wanted to say.
That's, go ahead.
That's what he wanted to say.
That's it.
Okay. Anyway, we won, either way, didn't get there. Anybody else? Hearing none, most adjourned?
Second, all in favor?
Any adjourned? Thank you. Thank you, Board of Education, for staying for the whole thing, I was thinking like you're gonna run out the door later.
I know.
Yeah, you're stuck. Thanks, guys.